Next up, we'll have Public Health.
Good morning, Commissioner. May I state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony? Thank you for joining us.
I make sure the mic is working. Good morning, Councilmember Heenan and other members of City Council. I am Thomas Farley, Commissioner of the Department of Public Health. With me today are Tara Moore, Deputy Commissioner for Finance, and Jayden Baker, the Chief of Staff for the Department. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Department of Public Health's operating budget for fiscal year 2017. The Department of Public Health's mission is to protect and promote the health of all Philadelphians and provide a healthcare safety net for the most vulnerable. We carry out this mission in many ways. The program that probably is most recognized is our Ambulatory Health Services Program, which operates eight neighborhood health centers. But we run many other programs designed to prevent people from getting sick by reducing environmental risks, controlling infectious diseases, and promoting healthy behaviors. The Department of Health's FY17 General Fund budget request is $123 million, which is 1.3 million above the FY16 estimated obligations. This increase is primarily due to planned salary increases and shared building services costs for the new South Philadelphia Health Center. We have a very diverse staff. Among 830 staff in full-time positions as of January 2016, over 75% are of minority race/ethnicity, including 62% who are African-American. Nearly 40% of the department's executive staff are minority. Women account for 71% of all full-time staff. People who are bi or multilingual represent 18% of all full-time staff, with Spanish being the predominant language, but our staff members speak a total of 47 languages. Almost 40% of the department's general operating fund budget supports our eight neighborhood health centers. These clinics provide a wide range of services, including primary care medical services for adults and children, obstetric care, family planning services, dental services, social services, behavioral health services, x-rays, and pharmacy. Across the whole system, there are about 300,000 patient visits a year. This entire network is now using an electronic health record. Putting this in place was a huge effort, requiring upgrades to our IT infrastructure, a stepwise rollout at successive centers, and training of administrative nursing and physician staff. This technology will help give our providers better information about their patients and help us improve the quality across the entire network. We hope to be completing the interfaces of the system with laboratories and pharmacies this calendar year. With the Affordable Care Act and Medicaid expansion in Philadelphia, more people are getting health insurance. However, our health centers continue to see many patients who are still not eligible for health insurance, such as undocumented immigrants and new residents who are temporarily uninsured, or who are temporarily uninsured, such as people who have recently become unemployed. In FY2015, 49% of the visits at health centers were for people who are uninsured. For the first six months of FY16, that fell to 42%. While we will never turn away patients without health insurance, we work to help every patient who is eligible for health insurance become enrolled. Specifically, we have benefits counselors at every health center who spend time with uninsured patients to review their eligibility and process their insurance applications. We're excited to have just opened a new Healthcare Center II facility in South Philadelphia just last week as part of a partnership with the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. When it's complete, in addition to the clinic, the new facility will have a recreation center and a library. As part of the joint arrangement with CHOP, the city is responsible for annual shared services fees, which appears as an increase in contractual funds in FY17. As most of you know, Health Center Number 10 in Northeast Philadelphia is busy. This area of the city has a growing population of immigrants and few other neighborhood health centers. The patient population continues to grow. In the first quarter of '16, we saw nearly 1,000 new patients at this facility, which is more than twice the number of new patients seen at other health centers. Because of demand, waiting times for new patients to get elective appointments are too long. We are scheduled to renovate the facility beginning this summer to increase the number of examination rooms, which should increase the number of patients we see in a day, and we're actively looking for additional space. You have my complete testimony, but let me highlight just a few other important issues. Smoking rates have fallen in recent years, but smoking is still perhaps the biggest single killer in Philadelphia, responsible for an estimated 2,150 deaths per year. As of the last survey in late 2014 or early 2015, 22% of adults in Philadelphia smoked. That's compared to 18% of adults nationwide and less than 15% in some other big cities. We're hopeful that the $2 per pack cigarette tax enacted in the fall of 2014 will encourage smokers to quit. We will continue to help smokers quit in other ways and work with retailers to enforce the law preventing tobacco sales to youth. To reduce the risk of foodborne illness, we continue to inspect restaurants, retail food stores, mobile food vendors, childcare centers, schools, special events, and institutions that serve food. Our goal is to reach all these food establishments at least once a year, and the institutions, because they serve vulnerable populations, four times a year. In FY2013, our average inspection interval was 17 months. In FY2015, that improved to under 15 months, and we hope to see continued improvements this coming year. In response to public interest, we are now posting inspection reports on the Internet immediately. We hope that making this information readily accessible will provide an incentive for restaurants to follow the best food safety practices. Finally, our department worked hard in the last few years to apply for accreditation by the National Public Health Accreditation Board, which is an independent, non-governmental agency. This involves submitting documentation for our accomplishments and capacities to fulfill approximately 300 criteria and undergoing a thorough site visit by experts appointed by the board. I'm pleased to say that early this year, we were granted accreditation, which is a very public acknowledgement of the quality and thoroughness of our public health programs. Going forward, this accreditation will make us more competitive for federal grant funding. Thank you very much, Council President, members of the City Council, for your continued support of public health in Philadelphia, and I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you for your testimony. The Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, every year, since you haven't been here, you haven't heard me say it, but every year I bring up Health Center 10, and I know you talked about that. Now, you say the renovations are scheduled to be in the summer. How soon do you think it would be where those renovations will actually result in some of that very, very long list of patients waiting would be cut down?
Yeah, the renovations are going to create four new examination rooms, which should increase our throughput. It's going to take some number of months before those renovations are complete, so it'll happen during the fiscal year. I should say, though, that demand continues to increase there, and so as we increase throughput, we may get more patients coming in, so that's why we're also looking for additional space. The facility is simply too small for us to handle the patient load in this large area that doesn't have many other neighborhood health centers.
Yeah, and I've been up there. I certainly see what you mean.
It's incredibly crowded.
And when you say you're actively looking for expansion space, without getting into total specifics, how close would you say that is? Or is it still just really in exploratory state?
We are really very actively looking at it, and I'd be happy to talk to you in more detail later on. There are some potentials in the area.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I know it's a difficult situation, but as you say, that's really an area that's grown. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're glad to be popular, but we're unhappy to have that long wait.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Chairman Heenan. Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a couple of questions on your testimony. It looks like you have 153 vacancies in your department. Is there anything that we can do to try to fill those vacancies?
You know, the Health Department has many different programs that are highly technical, and many different job titles as a result of that, and that makes filling those positions a long process. It's not like the Police Department where we can hire in big batches. We may be looking for one air pollution engineer, and the process is simply very complicated. I can only say that we are working with, I'm new here, looking at the system, trying to figure out how we streamline the system, and if there are things that the council can do, I would welcome the support. We have positions that we want to fill. We have work that needs to be done. We have people who want positions in there, so we would like to streamline the process.
Okay. The second question I have is, are the increases in your area based on performance?
I'm sorry to understand the question.
Salary increases. Are they based on performance or just cost of living?
They're based on the increase that is causing the increase in the total budget. That's based on a negotiated increase in the contract, to the extent that I understand that.
Right, but is that based on performance and negotiation, or is that just based on the cost of living?
I think it's a cost of living increase.
Okay. And then, the purchase of services, Class 200, in 2015 to 2017, it's gone up, I don't know, $7 million. Any particular reason it's over 10%? Any reason why that would increase that much?
This is a complicated answer to the question. We operate a nursing home by contract, and we have a new arrangement with the state where the city put up additional funds, which enable a drawdown of more Medicaid funds, so there's no net increase expenditure to the city through that transfer, but it does end appearing as greater contractual services there.
Last question. The soda tax proposal. I haven't heard your comments on this, but do you think there's any, I mean, the math is clear that from one cent, like 58 million, and one and a half cents is 77, 78 million. And so from a public health perspective, if the tax were not three cents, but if the tax were one or one and a half cents, how would you feel from a public health standpoint? Because the incremental monies for the extra tax are not that much. How do you feel about that?
A couple things. We are very enthusiastic about the mayor's entire budget proposal. There are health benefits to how the revenue is used, and there's also health benefits to the tax itself. As far as the sugary drinks, there are major risks for obesity and diabetes, and so whatever's going to reduce that consumption the most is what we are supportive of. So you will get a greater reduction in consumption with a three-cent tax than you will over a one-cent tax or one and a half cent tax.
But I've been told that diet drinks are just as bad as sugary drinks.
I wouldn't characterize it that way. There have been some good studies in recent years where people are randomized to sugary drinks and diet drinks, and people on diet drinks don't gain weight, and people on sugary drinks do. So during this time when our greatest public health concern in that area is obesity and diabetes, sugary drinks are a greater public health risk.
And would you also say that eating donuts and other types of sugary products are pretty bad for you?
Donuts are not good for you. I wouldn't recommend donuts. However, the concern about sugary drinks is not just the calories and not just the sugar. It's clear that sugar in liquid form is contributing more to weight gain and obesity than sugar in solid form. It tends to be added to the diet rather than replacing other forms of calories, and it causes a blood sugar rise, which causes hormonal changes. So people around the country who are particularly concerned about obesity have focused really on sugary drinks, not just sugar.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman Don.
Thank you, Councilman.
Good morning.
Nice to meet you, Councilmember.
Came in on the sugar conversation. What a place to step in. I'm going to call Councilwoman Bass first, since she was teed up, and then I'll ask a couple of questions.
I'm willing to yield my time, Mr. President.
Sure, Councilwoman?
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Ask you.
Sugar. So, and just kind of following up on it, because I wasn't prepared to ask the question, but since we're talking about sugar. So, the issue with respects to sugar, and you referenced the fact that, you kind of alluded to the fact that, and I shouldn't say your fact, that your perspective that other sugar products, such as donuts, were not as bad as sodas. Am I characterizing your statement?
I would say sugar in a beverage is more dangerous than sugar in a food, in a solid.
All right. So, and we are talking about pretty much sodas. We will acknowledge that.
Well, sodas, but there are many other sugary drinks that are not carbonated, like these fruit-flavored drinks, where people are getting an awful lot of sugar in that form these days.
Okay, so since I couldn't get this response from other areas, other departments, and people who are actually technically responsible for implementing the program, where would you say most of the carbonated sugary products are sold?
When you say "where," you mean geographically where? What, neighborhoods?
Yeah.
We can come up with, you know, overall, they're sold at all populations. They're purchased all over the city. In general, sugary drink consumption is higher as incomes go down, so you would expect in low-income neighborhoods to have...
In what? I'm sorry.
In general, as incomes go down, consumption of sugary drinks goes up. The soda companies are marketing more heavily in lower neighborhoods.
So in lower-income neighborhoods?
Yes, so you would expect it to be higher.
We couldn't get other people to say that at earlier hearings.
Yeah.
All right. So if there was a sugar tax generally with respects to all types of product, it would probably go across the spectrum and the demographics of the city, because there are a lot of people who are upper-income that eat Twinkies and other types of little sugar products. Am I correct?
In general, unhealthy foods are consumed more by low-income people than high-income people. They have fewer healthy options, so if you're looking at donuts or that sort of thing, or other things I'd characterize as junk food, you're going to find a similar pattern as where it's distributed across the city.
All right. Okay. So I just want to confirm that, because my perspective, I'm a politician, extreme novice as it relates to all the issues in the analysis relating to this, but I do know that in the area that I represent, and I look in the stores, and I represent actually Center City, you may not know, you're relatively new. I represent half of Center City, and I also represent North Philadelphia. And when we were asking earlier questions about where this product is being sold ultimately, who will ultimately end up paying the tax, because I do believe that this will be passed on to the consumer regardless of whatever anybody says, when I look at Cecil B. Moore as using an example where a significant number of stores proliferated across those commercial quarters where there are lower-income individuals, every store, you see the Hugs and the Capri's and all of them, little sugary products, and that's where the tax will be raised versus Rittenhouse Square, which also represents where there are other healthy choices. So you concur?
There's two different questions. One is, how is consumption now distributed across neighborhoods, across populations? The other is, how would the tax end up being distributed? And that's a slightly different question, because one thing we know is that low-income people are more sensitive to price. They have to be. They're going to be looking at their panties more, their knuckles more.
If they don't have money, yeah. I mean, if they don't have money, they don't have the money.
But we know, for example, with the soda tax in Mexico, people who are low-income were more likely to give up the sugary drinks and switch to bottled water than high-income people. So how the tax will end up being distributed across income groups in the future is an open question, but we would expect that the health benefit is going to actually be greater for low-income people.
So why do you think it will be distributed any differently if you're saying that the product is probably not being sold in higher-income areas because they have choices? So if the people, as you referenced, New Mexico, was it?
In Mexico.
Mexico? Okay. Interesting choice. Not necessarily comparable to the city of Philadelphia, but that's another story. If you have people who don't have money, as you indicated, in lower-income neighborhoods, then they will not drink the product because they can't afford it. So you anticipate the consumption will go down dramatically, so it will not be spread across all demographics, because the people in the higher-income brackets already don't drink it, and the people in the lower-income bracket, you suggest, will reduce their consumption?
Yeah.
Right? So how is it going to be spread out across more demographics?
Right, so right now, consumption is higher among people in low income, but also people with low incomes are more sensitive to price, so we would expect that all groups are going to reduce their consumption with a higher price, but the low-income people are probably going to reduce their consumption more than the high-income people, because they're paying attention to prices more. And so the actual health benefit of reducing their consumption would probably be greater for low-income people. So at the end, though, how that tax is going to be distributed across the different income groups is hard to tell, because we are going to see that greater fall in the low-income people than high-income.
Why would it be hard to tell? I don't understand.
Because the low-income people are consuming more now, but they're also going to fall more.
Right. I'll stipulate on that one.
Right, so I don't know whether they're going to fall so much that they're now equal to high-income people in consumption, or they'll fall more so they're less.
You're suggesting that the higher-income people, consumption will go up?
No, their consumption will go down too, but the consumption will go down even more among low-income people.
Okay. I just don't understand your premise.
I'm sorry if I'm not being clear about it.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about a more equitable distribution of the tax. I don't see that, based on you indicating that it's already a lower tax, will probably be a lower tax among upper-income people, and it'll be a higher tax on the lower-income people, and when that goes down, then you suggest that maybe they even go further down on the upper-income people. I don't understand how there will be a more equitable.
I mean, the taxes would be the same in any neighborhood, but just the current purchases are going to be higher among low-income people, but they're also, they're going to pay more attention to that increase in price than upper-income people. They have to.
I agree with that, because they have to.
So they're going to, some of them are going to change their purchasing pattern. Some of them are going to stop buying sugary drinks at all. Some of them will just buy less. They will probably reduce more than you'll see reduction among high-income people.
I agree.
So in the end, whether they're still higher in consumption or the same or lower is an open question.
Okay. All right. Maybe we're not on the same wavelength. Okay, all right. I'm going to go back to Councilwoman Bass, because I have some other questions. Sorry, Councilwoman.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure that when we asked the questions with respects to where this tax was going to ultimately be imposed, you concurred that it will be in lower-income neighborhoods. That's very important.
I'm saying that current purchases and current consumption is higher in low-income neighborhoods, but after the tax is in place, though, that's an open question.
We don't know.
But let me also say, I think this is important, the health benefit is going to be greater to low-income people.
I agree.
Low-income people are suffering more from obesity than...
I agree.
Excuse me?
No, I agree. I mean, there's no question about, you know, but there is a question about all sugary products. I don't necessarily agree with your premise, and you're the expert. I'm just saying, I see people that eat donuts seem to be having more challenging health issues than people that drink sodas.
Yeah. Let me say that the obesity epidemic is a huge problem. The diabetes epidemic is a huge problem. We have almost one in five African-American adults in Philadelphia now has diabetes. There's no one thing we're going to do that's going to make that problem go away.
Right, I agree.
But the single thing that we can do that have the greatest impact, as most public health people around the country are talking about, is a tax on sugary drinks.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you, Mr. President. And let's continue on with the sugar drink tax and the effect and consumption in Philadelphia. And actually, first, good morning, or good afternoon.
Okay.
So, just a couple of questions on that. So overall, you would say that the goal of the tax, or as the Health Commissioner, it is your hope that there will be a decrease in consumption?
Yes, I would hope that there will be a decrease in consumption.
Okay. And one of the things that greatly concerns me is that we are embarking on something that will really change the face of Philadelphia in terms of, you know, quality childhood, early childhood education. And I have some concern that we would put something so important under a funding stream that is so perilous and so unstable. And, you know, we wouldn't fund our fire department with sugar drink tax. We wouldn't fund our police department with this tax. We wouldn't fund anything that is important to us. We wouldn't fund it with this tax. And so I have some great concerns here, that we're putting in place a system that almost seems like it's designed to fail. We want consumption to go down. We want less consumption, but at the same time, we want to fund early childhood education in a significant way. This is something that we cannot afford to skimp on. We cannot afford to get it wrong, and we've gotten it wrong for so long. This, you know, this is a new future, a new hope for our city, and the idea that we are putting it in the hands of the sugary drink tax, which we all think consumption is going to, you know, it's a declining source of revenue. And so I would dare say that you wouldn't want your department funded on a sugary drink tax.
Hi, this is, I'm Anna Adams.
Hi, Anna.
I'm the budget director. Hi. I just wanted to clarify that the way that the funding will work is that the sugary drink tax goes into the general fund, and then from there, we will be paying for the costs of the pre-K community schools and everything else that we have proposed. So it will flow into the general fund like all the other taxes do. We're not saying, we're not directly only paying for it out of the sugary drink tax. I just wanted to clarify, it flows into the general fund, and from there, we will make the payments. So it will flow like every other tax that flows into the general fund.
But what we've been saying in public is that the money that comes from the sugary drink tax will fund early childhood education, not even community schools, not even libraries, but from the mayor's budget address. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's right.
What we said was that it wasn't going to be, the funds were not going to be coming for playgrounds or, you know, community schools, and I think that a lot of conversation has gotten convoluted.
Yeah.
But what we said was that the money that was coming from the sugary drink tax was going to pay for early childhood education.
That's right. So what we're saying is that we can't afford to pay for these programs out of the general fund right now, and so if we have the sugary drinks tax, we can afford to pay for these programs. So the way, and if we didn't have a sugary drinks tax, we don't find, we can't see a way of paying for these programs, and so that's how we are including it in the budget.
So we need the sugary drink tax to pay for early childhood education?
Right, but if it, but it will flow into the general fund.
Regardless of where it flows to, we need the sugary drink tax...
Yes.
...to pay for early childhood education.
That's how, yes, that's how we are proposing to do it.
Okay. And so we're putting early childhood education, which we all know is just critical, like we can't, you know, we have to do this, but we're doing it with a declining source of revenue.
Can I, let me just add...
What we think will be a declining source of revenue.
I appreciate very much your concern. I was part of the group that looked at the revenue estimates for this, and they assume a 55% decline in consumption. That's a very optimistic, from the Health Commissioner's perspective, decline in consumption. It may not be that much. If it doesn't decline that much, then the revenue will come in actually more than what is projected here. So yes, revenue will decline, I mean, consumption will decline with this tax, but that still is built into the model so that the revenue that is needed for this would still come out if it turns out the consumption decline is less than that.
Okay. And this is not a question for the Commissioner, but for Anna. Is there any other department that we could think of that is funded on a revenue stream that's declining?
And the decline is only, I mean, there's a huge, we assume the loss, the decrease in consumption is in the first year, and the decline is only very slight every year after that, and that's just a natural decrease in consumption of sugary drinks. We, I know that when we have increased taxes in the past, we have specifically done... We're not saying, we're not directly only paying for it out of the sugary drink tax. I just wanted to clarify, it flows into the general fund and from there, we will make the, the payments. So it will flow like every other tax that flows into the general fund.
But what we've been saying in public is that the money that comes from the sugary drink tax will fund early childhood education, not even community schools, not even libraries, but from the mayor's budget address. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's right.
What we said was that it wasn't going to be, the funds were not going to be coming for playgrounds or, you know, community schools. And I think that a lot of conversation has gotten convoluted.
Yeah.
But what we said was that the money that was coming from the sugary drink tax was going to pay for early childhood education.
That's right. So what we're saying is that we can't afford to pay for these programs out of the general fund right now. And so if we have the sugary drinks tax, we can afford to pay for these programs. So the way, and if we didn't have a sugary drinks tax, we don't find, we can't see a way of paying for these programs. And so that's, that's how we are including in the budget.
So we need the sugary drink tax to pay for early childhood education.
Right. But if it, but it will flow into the general fund.
Regardless of where it flows to, we need the sugary drink tax.
Yes.
To pay for early childhood education.
That's how, yes, that's how we are proposing to do it.
And so we're putting early childhood education, which we all know is just critical. Like, we can't, you know, we have to do this, but we're doing it with a declining source of revenue.
And let me just.
What we think will be a declining source of revenue.
I appreciate very much your concern. I, I was part of the group that looked at the, the revenue estimates for this and they assume a 55% decline in consumption. That's a very optimistic, from the Health Commissioner's perspective, decline in consumption. It may not be that much. If it doesn't decline that much, then the revenue will come in actually more than what is projected here. So yes, revenue will decline. I mean, consumption will decline with this tax, but that still is built into the model so that the, the revenue that is needed for this is, would still come out if it turns out the consumption decline is less than that.
Okay. And this is not a question for the Commissioner or for Anna. Is there any other department that we could think of that is funded on a, a revenue stream that's declining?
And the decline is only a, I mean, there's a huge, we assume the, the loss, the decrease in consumption is in the first year and the decline is only very slight every year after that. And that's just sort of a natural decrease in, in consumption of sugary drinks. We, I know that when we have increased taxes in the past, we have specifically done so for specific purposes, like if we've increased the real estate tax for the school district, we have done so for those. We don't, we generally, all of the, the funds flow into the general fund and then, and then we, we pay for, for services out of the general fund.
So if we think there's only going to be a slight decline in the consumption?
So we assume all of the, as soon as the tax is imposed, then the, the price would go up and therefore the consumption would happen immediately. And then after that, so we see the 55% drop off in consumption and therefore in the first year, and that's built into the model. And then after that, there's a natural decrease in the consumption, which we're seeing as a trend nationally, which we've built into the model. And that's a very slight decrease every year related to that. That's about a 1% decrease.
Okay.
I think in, in consumption and we build that into the model.
Okay. So it's, so overall then, if there's a slight decline in the consumption.
Yes.
And we know that primarily in lower income neighborhoods, that's where the consumption is, then that equation says to me that overall, lower income folks from North Philly, West Philly, South Philly are really the ones who are going to be paying for the sugary drink tax.
Well, we're assuming there's a, a drop off in consumption and I think the Commissioner was saying that that drop off in consumption is likely to be more in neighborhoods that are lower income than neighborhoods that are higher income. So I wouldn't say necessarily that the distribution is, is, so I think because the, the current consumption is really high in low income neighborhoods, the drop off is actually going to be lower. It's difficult for us to tell, but I think if we're, if we believe that price is as a bigger impact in lower income neighborhoods, then if the price goes up, then consumption would go down further in those neighborhoods.
Okay.
So I think for who's bearing the tax will, will depend on who's, who's more susceptible to price changes.
Okay.
So I, I mean, I don't know whether you'd agree, Dr. Farley. That's my understanding of how this would.
And let me also, this is unlike, say, a sales tax. This is one tax that no consumer has to pay. People can choose.
Can you pull the mic a little closer to you, please?
I'm sorry. I'm saying unlike, say, a sales tax, this is one tax that no consumer has to pay. They can choose to get, buy a beverage that does not tax, like bottled water, or drink tap water for free. And so many people are going to make that choice, not everybody. So there'll still be some revenue, but from the Health Commissioner's perspective, the more that make that choice, the better.
Okay. I know my time is up. I'll come back around, but I, I just think that we have to, you know, be, be real about what we're talking about here. You know, we're, we're trying to fund something that is critically important to the city of Philadelphia, that everyone wants. We all want early childhood education, but we're funding it on a revenue stream that is unstable and that we know is unstable and that we have to, we, we have to figure out some kind of way that we're going to fund early childhood education. The sugary drink tax is important, you know, if we were able to say it was distributed equitably, but I don't think that we can say that. I think that we're all pretty clear that where the funds are going to come from and who's going to be paying the tax. It's not going to be equally distributed, but still, and yet, the program is going to be equally distributed. So as Council President said, his district covers, you know, North Philadelphia and Rittenhouse Square. And North Philadelphia, you know, folks will benefit, but they'll be paying probably a larger percentage of, percentage of the tax. But on Rittenhouse Square, you know, folks will be able to benefit, but are less likely to be drinking soda, to be purchasing and drinking soda. So I just, you know, I'll come back around to, to honor the time, but I just think that what we say has to have some, you know, level of clarity and, you know, really be accurate and, and understanding what we're doing here. So I'll come back around.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Real quick, with respects to the national trend that you referenced, I don't think we're there yet. I think the, how long has the tax been in place?
We were, sorry, I was just referring to there's a national trend of decrease in consumption of sugary drinks.
Just generally?
Generally. And so that's what we built in.
So the revenues are going down anyway, which the, actually, the soda guys are telling us and different products. So again, with respects to the Councilwoman's premise that it's a declining revenue stream, naturally, without the sugar tax, but with the sugar tax, will probably be an additional declining revenue stream. My concern with respects to that, and don't get me wrong, I'm trying to figure out a way to take 10 pounds off as we speak. Been drinking diet Pepsis forever, not diet Pepsis, well, diet whatever. You know, now they tell me something's wrong with that, but that's another story. So the obesity issue is, you know, a real challenge. I think frankly, speaking with young people, a lot of it has to do with exercise because we were young, you had to exercise in school. We had to exercise everywhere. Now all kids do is do this and that's the extent of their exercise is the thumb. And this is a reality. So we need to be a broader approach. With respects to the issue about the uncertainty of the fund, that all this money goes into the general fund, and I can recall, I was actually talking to a colleague some years ago, I don't know if all of the members here were here, when we had a similar tax, it was a parking tax, 20, 20% or significant tax. And we were going to fund parks and wrecks, the street repaving, never saw the, the light of day, right? We did not do that. Well, we ended up just funding those programs out of the general fund. And my, one of my concerns about this, and if there's declining revenues, then we will ultimately get to a point where we will have to raise another tax to maintain particularly the level of service that you all are proposing, which is quite significant. So the question is, if that's what we will ultimately do, assuming that the consumption will continue to decline, because there's going to be not only lack in consumption, there's going to be people going across, you know, when you look at where the markets are located, there are going to be people going across, you know, across the county line and they're going to find alternative ways of purchasing it. Then why isn't it, and given the, and I know it's a long statement, given the importance of this, why don't we look at a, a general revenue stream from day one to talk about funding pre-K? If it's that important and if we understand that these revenues will be declining, why don't we look at that instead of waiting three years down the line when the revenues decline? Then we're sitting here with a pre-K program that's running out of money.
And, and I think, I think the administration did look at a couple of other taxes, but I think we believe that this has, is a stable tax despite that slight decrease in consumption. We think it's overall stable, the, the assumption on our.
You say it's a stable tax?
Yeah, it's stable. I mean, the slight, it, it doesn't vary very much in our, in our revenue estimates. It varies sort of 96, about 96 million when it's fully implemented and doesn't change that much, partly because we think we'll, in the first few years, we'll get better at enforcement and we've put money in the revenue department for enforcement. So when I mentioned the decline, it's a very slight decline in revenues. We did look at other types of revenue sources, but this, I think, was the most palatable.
So there's a gentleman who works for the Inquirer, the editorial board, and I, I can't think of maybe on a handful of times where we agree. And he was on a TV show and he said that this particular tax is a tax that was proposed because it was the least path of resistance. Because the reality is that, he said, poor people, I prefer to say low income people will be the ones that will get the tax. He believed that that was the easiest path because lower income people tend not to be in a position to fight the government like upper income people do. And that's, that's the perspective out in the neighborhood. I'm not going to tell you what they call this tax in some parts of the community.
And I think from, from our perspective, we, if we look at the real estate tax, that would be borne by all income levels.
Right.
With a drink, a tax like this one, you could make choices that, in which you don't have to purchase this product. And therefore, because of that, I think, you know, the argument could be made that, that this is, you know, has a less of an impact if you're choosing to buy other things. It's not like a sales tax, as the, as the Commissioner pointed out, where that would be imposed on everybody and there's clearly a level of regression with a, regressive nature with a sales tax. This is something that you could opt out of buying this product, where there is a property tax and some of the other taxes that would be borne by everyone.
Okay. Well, that's what we fund a lot of things out of because it's a stable.
Yes.
There are a lot of things we have that.
But I mean, we're talking about raising that tax.
Pardon me?
I'm just talking about in terms of raising another tax. That was one of the discussion points that we had with the administration.
Okay. I'm going to stop. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. I might come back at some point in time. Chair recognized, Councilman Dom.
Can you hear me? Okay, thanks, Councilwoman. Just a follow-up questions. You know, when the mayor announced this soda tax, I personally decided to stop eating sugar because I watched this movie that I've talked about called Fed Up. And I've lost 21 pounds from not eating sugar. And in fact, I haven't worn this suit in six years. It's amazing.
Congratulations.
But it's sugar because I never drank soda. I never drank soda, diet or regular, sugar. And when you watch that movie, you understand the impact of sugar. So my question is, is there a way to tax sugar versus just picking on soda?
You know, you could think about taxing sugar. You could think about taxing unhealthy foods more broadly. It ends up being a lot more complicated to do that. It's easier to draw lines around sugary drinks than start to get to sugar as a whole or junk food. Sugar is not good for you and congratulations on doing that. And I'm pleased to see that the health benefits you're getting from that. But definitely, sugar in liquid form is worse for you and it is the single biggest source of sugar in the diet is sugar in beverages. And so there's, I haven't seen anybody in public health figured out a way to tax sugar as a way of approaching this problem.
And you talked about the health benefits. Are there any estimates of what this tax would have on health costs down the road? Is there any kind of numbers on that?
There are. As a matter of fact, there was a study that just came out last week. I'm going to pull it up here. The group at Harvard had developed a, a model for what sugary drink taxes do and they put in the Philadelphia numbers and they estimated over 10 years that this would save close to $200 million in healthcare costs for people in Philadelphia. And that's basically due to reduced rates of obesity and diabetes, which end up running a lot of healthcare costs.
And do you have a chart that would actually show us the obesity, diabetes issues across the city by district? So you don't have, do you have a chart that would indicate that?
We can calculate, by, by council district, you mean? Yes, we can calculate and send you diabetes rates by, by council district. I mean, I've looked at it, it's quite high. In some districts, it's, it's over 20%, over one in five. And just to be, for people who haven't seen these statistics in the past, you know, diabetes is not a normal part of the human condition. If you go back to 1960, before we had the obesity epidemic, maybe 2% or 3% of people had diabetes. It was pretty rare. So now it's, you know, everybody has a relative with diabetes.
You know, I met the producer, fortunate to meet the producer of the movie Fed Up, and she did say to me that diet drinks are as bad as the regular drinks.
Yeah. There are some people who say that. I wouldn't agree with her on that. I think, and I can give her evidence to, to show why I disagree with her on that. Now, we don't get out there and promote diet drinks. We don't recommend it. I would rather have people be drinking water, but if they have to choose between full sugar beverages and diet drinks, I would rather have them be consuming diet drinks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognized, Councilman Tobin Burger.
Council President, thank you very much. Sugary drink tax. I think Councilwoman Bass was right on target. This is an important, important development program with pre-K. And I think she's also right that if we were to fund our police and fire department on a sugary drink tax, I think people would laugh at us and say how ridiculous that is. Mr. Commissioner, in all due respect, you brought up the fact that Mexico has now banned sugary drinks or taxed.
Taxed.
Not banned, not banned. What you're really looking at, though, is a nation. Philadelphia is not a nation. It's not even a state, even though some of the people in the state think maybe we should be a state or some sold down Delaware River or something. The fact of the matter is, we don't live on an island. People will actually go to Delaware County, to Montgomery County, to Bucks County, to Gloucester Township, to Gloucester County, to Camden County, to Kent County in Delaware to avoid this, and I think they will. Somebody in the industry told me personally, said, I won't name it, name him because he didn't say it publicly, but I will say what he said. He said, "Tobin Burger, city council passes this sugary drink tax, you're going to see the biggest bootlegging operation since prohibition." I think the numbers are really, really flawed. They, through their own admission, say there's a 50% drop off rate. I think it's going to be much more than that. And also, with the fact that we don't live off an island, you're going to get, and just so you know how I know this, because on a day where I'm moving slowly, it takes me 10 minutes to walk into Montgomery County from my home. Those in the border areas are going to have very, very difficulty. So to base a program that is so important to the city, and I get it, I think pre-K can help this city in many, 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 many ways, we have to find another alternative to fund this. And that's this collective body here. I agree with Council President that this is a, a tax that is very much regulated to folks that don't have a lot of money but like the sugary drinks. And I think as Americans, we should be free to choose that. Although, I will often give my comments to Councilman Dom, I did have a chance to watch Fed Up this weekend, and you're right on target. In fact, if we do anything out of this body, we should make it a point that everybody in Philadelphia has to watch that movie, Council President, because it is that good. But to base an economy, to base a funding source on something that you want to end, I mean, we might as well then tax all of sugar and cupcakes and donuts and all kinds of things. If we're going to be able to fund this, if we are at all, we must truly find another way to fund this because the numbers don't work. Mexico and Philadelphia are eons different because one is a nation and one is merely a city. And I don't know, I, I think my comments are more than any kind of questions is, I, I don't believe there's an answer to the funding source through a, on a tax on the very issue that you state is unhealthy. And I would agree with you, it is unhealthy. I, I sit here before you, I'm, give a little medical, I'm prediabetic. You know what? I drank a lot and I ate a lot of sweets and I probably eat the wrong things. Fed Up may have saved my life. But the fact of the matter is, to, to develop a, a program and to have it funded by something that is so, man, there's more holes in this tax than Swiss cheese, really, seriously. I mean, so I, I, I have to say, we must look at other things and you must, as Health Commissioner, promote healthy eating, which I think you're doing. I'm not going to say you're not. But the fact is, this does not work on this, on this policy. Will not work and cannot work. And is that important that, I'm sorry to see this go, be developed like this. I thank you. Your comments would be, would be appreciated on that.
I'll thank you very much, Councilmember. Let me just say that besides Mexico, the other jurisdiction that has passed a tax on sugary drinks is Berkeley, California, which is a town. And that's early, it's just in this calendar year. But so far, it doesn't look like there's an awful lot of people that are purchasing across jurisdictions. They're going out of their way to get out of Berkeley to another city in order to purchase sugary drinks. I understand Philadelphia is different from Berkeley.
It is.
And certainly, there will be some that'll do that, but I don't expect it's going to be large. If people are going to the grocery store and they're buying all their other foods and they're buying their soda when they're there, it's a pretty big inconvenience to then go in your car and make a separate trip to Montgomery County.
Well, now, there's a number of neighborhoods where it's not so inconvenient.
On the border, it, it may make a difference. I don't think it's going to be huge. We would see, again, the, the early evidence in Berkeley doesn't seem to suggest that that's a big problem.
And there are some that say that the, the manufacturers and those that actually And there are some that say that the manufacturers and those that actually will pay the tax will maybe not pass it along. Well, I disagree with that, because it's a cost of doing business down the line that is being passed along, because their motivation is profit. And also, another thing, Council President, if I could, I, there's supposed to be 31 different people that can, eligible to pay this tax. I asked for that list, and was told I can't get it because it's secret somehow. I don't know. Maybe like the Coke formula.
Yeah. On the question of the, will the manufacturers pass through the tax to the price or not, I can just say that in Berkeley, there've been evaluations, and about half of the tax is passed through. And so, they're with competition. It may be that it's not all passed through, but a certain amount is. And that, if there is a certain amount, then that'll have an effect on reducing consumption. The other comment, I'd just say, on the question of should we support a government program with a tax on something that we don't want people to consume, you know, we do have, in many places around this country, cigarette taxes.
I understand.
And those are used to support a number of government programs. And smoking rates are declining over time. That's a good thing. But still, that revenue has been very useful.
Well, because I tapped into it at a time when the revenue was even stronger. But I was going to ask you, because it's being cited all the time. What is the population of Berkeley, California?
I think it's about 100,000.
Okay. That's very small compared to Philadelphia.
Yeah, it's not Philadelphia, but it's the first place that has put in a specific sugary drink tax.
Right, that is correct.
And so, the evaluation from there is the best data we have to go on.
Well, yeah, I get that part, but it's barely a council district, 100,000 people. So, Council President, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's actually, we have 150 in
Oh, yeah.
Our council district.
Oh, bigger.
Yeah, and this, and I know I said I was going to shut up, but to follow up on the council. Berkeley, I mean, Berkeley, the demographics in Berkeley are so disliked the city of Philadelphia. The median income per family, the median household, the size of that particular, the demographics as it relates to race and all of those issues are so much different than Philadelphia. In addition to which, I understand it was actually a referendum in Berkeley that created this sugar. So to compare that with the city of Philadelphia, in this particular process, frankly speaking, is not even, not even close. All due respect.
Berkeley is definitely not Philadelphia.
And hold up. One last thing, not to cut you off. The Berkeley was one cent
That's correct.
Versus three cents.
That's correct.
So I'm saying, it's like apples and oranges here. So I don't know why we even keep referencing Berkeley.
This is the best data we have to go on, because it is the closest example. The other example is Mexico, where the people there clearly are low-income, and they are similarly behaving as you would expect, that there is a decline in sales, but they're, and prices gone up.
All right. Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, they're not allowed to sell to the United States, so they can't.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. So I said I wasn't going to interject. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
There we go. Thank you very much, Council President. So, you know, I voted against a soda tax previously, and I'm trying to keep an open mind, best I can, although I do have a lot of issues. Me personally, I do think it's bad tax policy to tax items, like soda, potato chips. And I did vote to tax cigarettes. I don't think it's good tax policy. I just voted for it because I felt that if we didn't tax cigarettes, we wouldn't have the money to keep the schools afloat. And the schools being afloat are very important, so it's kind of a rock-and-a-hard-place-type thing. But I knew it was a temporary tax, and that we needed the money. The issue about, and that's, I'm not talking about health policy, because you're the Health Commissioner, and so health has come into the tax policy kind of the question. So, what about marijuana? Is marijuana good for people, in your opinion?
No. Marijuana is, marijuana smoke is at least as dangerous as tobacco smoke. And so, I don't recommend that people smoke marijuana.
Yeah, I don't want to be like, you know, like, not serious with you, but it seems inconsistent to me, from a health point of view, that we have gaming, which I don't think is good for your health, me personally, but it's legal. You're an adult. You want to go gambling, go ahead, do it. I try not to go there. And marijuana, I don't think that's really a good thing either, and I don't know what it leads to. I even worry about the opioids. We just heard about the opioids and the heroin and what that leads to. So it's hard for me to really look at tax policy, tax policy through taxing things that we don't like. And especially when we're making decisions for people who, like us, have a right to make decisions for themselves, but we figure it's good for them, and we're smarter than them, and we make poor choices, which may be actually the case, but they have limited choices. And so, you know, in my neighborhood of Cobb's Creek, I walk down to a corner store, and I may get a Diet Coke and some ice cream for the kids. And there are just less options in my neighborhood, for vacation, for stress relief, for sports or for anything else. But I can walk three blocks this way and get my Diet Coke in Delaware County. So, if the price of soda goes up, that convenience store has shut down about five times. And I don't really notice it until it's gone, because the people who run that store make very little money there, because they're, it's a little bit dangerous in my neighborhood. And so, we're fortunate to have a store, because you could get milk and diapers and other things there, too, eggs and whatnot. So my concern is, from, you know, this conversation, that if, if we are not just going to do things for health purposes, then what we're doing is, we're finding convenience source to get some money. And I don't know what source that's going to be next time, potato chips or whatever. And it is shaky, because you're never going to have enough money that way, when you live right next to other places where you can easily get, you can replace those items, to Councilwoman Bass's point, you know, that money declined, you find another tax. And it's very tempting for government to find items to tax. Beauty products, for example. I don't know if we're allowed to tax those. So, you know, my kind of concern is that, can you look at this from a health perspective? If you do not take in the total considerations of what the, you know, I understand sugar's not good. I put two teaspoons in my coffee this morning, and I drank it. And I'm probably going to keep doing that. I don't know. But I'm not saying it's good for me, and I feel bad telling you that, but it's hard for me to look at this as a, kind of a tax policy thing. And it's hard for me to look at it a health policy thing. I know it's better not to do a lot of things, put your helmet on when you ride your bicycle and all that. How could you address my concerns?
Yeah. A few things. First of all, the two teaspoons of sugar you had in your coffee is not a lot of sugar compared to sugary drinks. And it's probably more like a dozen in a 12-ounce soda.
I drink like 10 cup of coffee in the morning. I'm sorry.
So, but no, the amount of sugar in these sugary drinks really is enormous. It's much more than people would ever put in on their own. Second, there's actually a long tradition in this country of taxing things that we don't recommend that people consume, but they want to consume anyway. It's not just cigarettes, but also alcohol. And the revenue is used for a variety of government purposes, including addressing some of the social problems and health problems that are caused by those substances. So this just would add sugary drinks to the list of tobacco and alcohol, things that we are taxing. Recognizing that people, some people consume them anyway, and that prohibiting them is a mistake. That's what we felt about alcohol after the prohibition. But this does, it deals with some of the problems and some of the needs of government. The other comment to make is that, you mentioned the convenience store, and you're concerned about its closing. There are, I'm sure, people who are coming to you and saying that this is going to hurt small business, because people are going to buy less soda. But, you know, people have an option to buy other beverages that doesn't, that don't have sugar in it, and then wouldn't be taxed. And that's exactly what happened in Mexico, is that sales of sugary drinks went down, and sales of bottled water went up to equalize. And so, the total sales of a store, the total sales of the industry, beverage industry, stayed the same. So this isn't going to have any huge impact on the business, and so that convenience store is likely to stay open nearby you.
I appreciate your health-oriented policy answer. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, a couple more questions on the sugary drink tax. And have we, and actually, it's more for Anna. Is Anna still here? So Anna, the question I have is, when we looked at funding something so important, did we consider a bond? You know, we're going to, you know, go after a huge amount of capital to be able to do the playground rebuilds and the community schools. And I think to the tune of about $300 million, $400 million. And then there was the additional revenue that we hope to generate, or the additional dollars we hope to get, which was supposed to come from, I think we were going to go through, you know, different, I can't think of the sources right now, they escape my mind, but through foundations, grants, that sort of thing.
For rebuild? Yes. So we have assumed that we would do three borrowings, each of $100 million, for rebuild, and that would be over six years. And then the rest would be raised through private philanthropic and federal sources.
Okay. So, private?
State, yeah. I mean, there's money, kind of other sources. I know that Mike DiBarrodi is can talk more about that, but that's the plan.
So, is there any reason why we didn't fund something so important the same way? That we're looking at playground, you know, we're going through stable sources of funding for playgrounds and community schools?
Yes. So the way that we
But early childhood education, we're looking at something that is unstable.
In general, you don't get out a bond for ongoing operating costs, because these are kind of one-time capital investments. That's how generally you finance these over a long period of time. And that's, so with rebuild and with the general capital budget, we, because these are long-term investments, then you can finance that over a long period of time, and that's how we look at doing this. This is a long-term asset, and so we'd be investing sort of a long term, so we'd be paying this off over 20 years, and so it makes sense that we could do a bond for those.
So with bonds, it's more capital versus programmatic?
That's right.
Is there anything that we have gotten funding for that is programmatic in the city of Philadelphia?
Not my knowledge. I mean, there may be things that I'm just not aware of, but in general, that's how we do a long-term borrowing for a long-term asset. And so, that's in our guidelines for the capital budget.
Because it just may be worthy of thinking of doing it in this instance. Only because if we're borrowing, you know, if you're borrowing 300 or 400 million, what's another 100 million?
Well, I think for us, anytime we, we take borrowing fairly seriously in the Finance Department, just because when you borrow, you, there are fixed costs that we have to pay every single year. And anytime we borrow money, we have to pay that interest on that borrowing. And we have high fixed costs at the city, because of our high pension costs and our other costs.
Absolutely.
And so, we try very hard not to borrow money unless we think we need it, or if it's for a long-term asset. And so, with the capital budget, we're very careful about how we, you know, there's so much need, but we have to be careful with the resources that we have. And we don't want to increase the amount of fixed costs that we have too much.
I don't mean to take it lightly. You know, I'm not suggesting that you all take it lightly, or that we should either, when we borrow that kind of money.
Right.
You know, it's a lot of money.
It is.
And so, I would just say that if there's anything that is worthy of that kind of investment, it's early childhood education.
And we agree. I mean, I think that's why we are so excited about the idea of doing expanded quality pre-K. We think of this as a really good, long-term investment in children and Philadelphia's future, and that's why we're really excited about this proposal.
Okay. All right. As we, I'm just going to move to another topic, just for a moment. One of the concerns that I have, as we talk about, you know, sugar and some of the health effects, particularly on low-income communities, is we see that there is a disparity in Philadelphia in terms of all of the healthcare institutions that we have. We have some of the best healthcare in the nation, right here in Philadelphia, and yet we have some of the highest rates of obesity, hypertension, diabetes, you name it. Poor people in Philadelphia have it. And they have it in numbers that are just outrageous. So it almost makes you feel as if, for the institutions that we have here, and this is a call to them as well, you know, who are you here to serve? Who are you here to connect with and to make a difference? Does it matter that Philadelphia has these high rates of disparities in all of the categories, every box checked, and that, you know, folks in the neighborhoods can't seem to get access? And I think that that's a huge, huge problem. And I don't know if there is anything that the Health Department is planning to combat that.
Yeah. Let me just say, the healthcare system in this country is very much focused on cures, in particular, hospital care. And that's good if you're sick, and if you need to be in the hospital. When I'm, you know, sick, I want to go to a doctor, too. But it doesn't really prevent the problems. And so, you wouldn't expect that putting money into healthcare is going to reduce rates of obesity or reduce rates of diabetes. Obesity and diabetes come from the conditions in which people live, the social conditions and the things that are available in their neighborhoods. And so, in public health, the Health Department, we think about how to prevent those sorts of things. And, you know, the, this, the mayor's budget proposal addresses it from a couple of ways. It tries to address one of the risk factors, which is consumption of sugary drinks, but it also provides the kind of investments into the social conditions in which people live, with things like pre-K, which could help prevent health problems down the line. So I agree with you that our, the amount of money we spend in healthcare in this country is not addressing our fundamental health problems. We're doing what we can to try to contribute to the solution.
Okay. What's, you know, one of the statements you just made, oh, I'm sorry, I'm out of time, right? I can go? Okay. One of the statements you just made was about, you know, that basically people, you know, what you have in your neighborhood is what you have access to, and that's how, how people end up, you know, in the situations that they end up in, in terms of being unhealthy. So if all you have in your neighborhood is stop and goes, and we have neighborhoods where they are just in abundance, you can't find a tomato, but you can certainly find a place to get a cold beer and a shot of liquor. And so, I'd like to know what the Health Department sees its role as, in terms of addressing the stop and goes that exist in our neighborhoods. I recently went into a stop and go at the corner of 22nd and Cambria, which is in my district, and, what's Cambria, Indiana, I'm sorry, 22nd and Indiana, I think it was. But I went in, and, you know, I said, you know, on the outside it says, you know, you can buy sandwiches, or you can buy noodles, or you can buy this, that, the other thing. So I went in, and I said, "Well, I'd like to order something. What do you serve?" And so, the first person told me, "We don't serve food." And then someone else came from behind the plexiglass and says, "Oh, no, 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 we serve food." I said, "Well, what kind of food do you serve? I'd like to see a menu." And they said, "Well, we sell noodles." I said, "Okay, well, let me, what kind of noodles do you sell?" And it was noodles and noodles. Couple, you know what I'm talking about, pour the hot water in?
Yeah.
Everybody's had those on occasion, right? And so, but that was the food that they served to qualify as, basically, I guess, not being a bar. So they serve food, I mean, they serve noodles for food, they serve potato chips, candy, cheese puffs for children. There are two schools in the neighborhood, actually a daycare center right around the corner, almost adjacent to this building, and a public elementary school less than one block away. And so, a child could come in and be able to purchase candy, snacks, whatever they wanted, while I was able to purchase, you know, as an adult, an alcoholic beverage. And I'd like to know what the Health Department's stance is on this phenomenon that's happening in our community. It seems as if somehow, you know, this rule or this allowance that you could sell shots of hard liquor, you know, it seems as if we woke up and one day it was just a rule. So I don't know exactly when that became the rule, but it is. It's legal, but it's really destroying communities. And when we talk about wanting to do something to affect health, I can think of nothing else that's more important than addressing some of these stop and goes, because they really do support, you know, a condition of alcoholism. You know, you can come in, you can get a shot, you can stay, you can hang all day. I have stop and goes where people hang out all day. It's like the neighborhood spot. People just come and they hang. And I'd like to know what the Health Department is planning to do, or do you see yourself having a role in that, or what can be done?
Yeah. First of all, thanks for raising this as an issue. I couldn't agree more. In these poor neighborhoods, you have these small stores that are selling alcohol and cigarettes and junk food, or, another way of looking at it, they're selling the leading causes of death.
Yes.
And if that's what people see
Can we tax them instead of soda? Can we tax the stop and goes?
Well, you know, we
We could do three cents if customers still make out. We could do really, really well.
The, I mean, the Health Department inspects those places for their food sales. But otherwise, we don't regulate them much. We are, we do have our healthy corner store network, where we're working, really on a voluntary basis, to try to have these corner stores sell a healthier mix of products. We're doing this with the Food Trust. That has made some difference. Doesn't make a radical difference. It, there's not a lot of authority right now for us to do things other than ask, but let me say, I'm very glad you're interested in this problem, and I would be[1771.45]
Oh, yeah.
Very enthusiastic about talking to you more about it, to see what we can do.
Well, I'd like to really work on this issue. I'd like to do a stop and go tour with you in the eighth district.
Would be happy to do that with you.
Absolutely. We're going to set it up today.
I'll be there.
All right. And as we, as we move forward and working on this problem, you know, one of the things that I've noticed is that pretty much everyone that I've went into, you know, I would feel perfectly comfortable ordering something from the grill, because they're all spotless. They haven't been used, it looks like, in years. They're nice and clean. So I'm sure when your Health Department goes in, if you look at the grill, you'll see it's, it's spotless, but at the same time, the liquor sales contributing to alcoholism, contributing to really just being a nuisance in the community, is very much problematic. So I look forward to setting that up with you soon.
I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I put a notice on your, about Barbara Daniels Cox, I just put a notice on your desk. Are there further questions? Further questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony, and
Thank you.
We may do you on callbacks. Okay. We're going to take a break until 2 o'clock. Thank you.